For all the blessings you would tend to us, we ask you to continue to bless this nation, this county and this state that we do your will and your way. Bless those that are trying to preserve peace among the nation. And for all the COVID survivors that have survived and their families that are coping now, and for all the loved ones they've lost, we ask for blessings in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Jones. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I have 7:01 PM, and so I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome you and call this meeting of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners to order. We will start with our pledge of allegiance. And I will lead us tonight in that. So if Commissioner or Mr. Floyd will get that flag, if everybody will please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. All right, I'd like to call roll here. So if you would unmute your microphone so you can be heard. Commissioner Bun? Mr. Bun was just here, so we're skip him and come back. Commissioner Speed? Commissioner Speed, can you hear me?
Here.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Floyd?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Commissioner Floyd?
Here.
Commissioner London?
Here.
Commissioner Pierce?
Here.
And I am here as well. And Commissioner Bun is back. Where's Commissioner Bun? I don't see him. All right, well, maybe we will pick him up in a moment. Maybe he's having a little bit of a technical difficulty, but I'd like to move forward this time with our first item on our agenda, the consent agenda. Having reviewed this, what's the pleasure of the board?
No to prove.
No for approval.
Of a motion by Commissioner Pierce, a second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we will go to a roll call vote. Commissioner Speed? Commissioner Speed?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Pierce?
Yes.
Thank you. And I vote yes. Yes is heaven, and so order. Just for a little housekeeping briefly here, I will say thank you after each time you acknowledge your roll call vote so that you know that I heard you before I go to the next one for everyone tonight. All right, item number two on our agenda is comments from the public tonight. This is the time set aside by a board of commissioners to allow public five minutes to address the board on issues concerning our county. Currently, it's my understanding we have four folks signed up for this. And the first one on my list is Mr. Frank Winstead. Is Mr. Frank Winstead available? Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Hello.
Mr. Winstead, welcome.
Good evening to all and a special good morning to the county lawyer. This is Frank Winstead, 145 Victoria Court, Youngsville, North Carolina, On this President's Day, let us remember some recent bold facts presented by the Franklin County Health Director as published in the Franklin Times regarding the federal distribution of COVID-19 vaccine doses to the county, which were reduced by two-thirds. This occurred shortly after President Trump left office and Joseph Robinette Biden II took over. So according to the Health Director, Biden's numbers are one-third of former President Trump's numbers on vaccine doses. Hmm. Anybody surprised by that? Also, Governor Roy Ashberry Cooper III handling of vaccine distribution wasn't targeted at the Health Director's comments. So the county Health Director is willing to take on those up in Washington DC and those down in Raleigh. But it doesn't really matter now that Walgreens and CVS are offering COVID-19 vaccinations. Maybe the Health Department can go back to focusing on the GRID epidemic, G-R-I-D. How long have they been working on that one? But this is not the only local interjurisdictional conflict. In the Franklin Times classifieds, the town of Franklin felt the need to publicly dismerch the county lawyer's good name. In violation of town and state building regulations, a hearing will be held before the code enforcement officer on February 26th was in a public notice specifically naming not only the shell company that owns a piece of land in downtown Franklinton, but the actual names of the owners of that property. The notice went so far as to list the county lawyer's lawyer by name, or maybe it was just a very common name. Or maybe the town of Franklinton is trying to send a message about how jurisdictions should be maybe get along better, you know, like one hand washes the other, so to speak. Or I guess you would actually need water for that to happen, if you know what I mean. Maybe during your privy session this evening, you will get an update on the water lawsuits and the many other lawsuits. Have a better night, y'all. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. Winstead. Mr. Floyd, I have my next person is Ms. Lucy Allen. Is she available? Ms. Allen, good evening. If you would state your name and address for the benefit of our clerk tonight, you have five minutes, ma'am.
Lucy Allen, 312 North Main Street, Lewisburg, North Carolina. Did you need something else? I'm sorry.
Ma'am, that's it.
I was trying to unmute myself. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Lucy Allen, and I'm here to join others in addressing the need for an animal control advisory council. In 2013, I adopted my dog Lady from the Franklin County Shelter. For that, my family had had three dogs, all of whom had been found in the country. Commissioner Speed will know that well. They were lucky lost ones, but many are not. Some of them are in my neighborhood, and it's time for a new animal control ordinance that guides laws, programs, and policies. We have good people in animal control. They need better tools. Establishing an animal control advisory board is a good start. Thank you again, and like others here, I hope you will make that action a priority.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Mr. Floyd, I have Krista Duncan. Is she available? Ms. Duncan, can you hear me? Ms. Duncan, can you hear me? If you can hear me, unmute your microphone.
Um, okay, I think I just unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I can. If you would state your name and address for the benefit of our clerk, we have five minutes for you to share with us tonight.
Oh, thanks so much. My name is Krista Duncan, and I live at 834 Duke Valentine Wind Road here in Lewisburg. First off, I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight. Excuse me, I'm sorry, my throat is a little off tonight. Over time, our shelter has lost sight of its principle and is in need of some reform. I'm pleased that there's been several positive changes made as a result of public outcry that began last year. I would like to see those changes act as a springboard for further reform and in essence create an image makeover that mutually benefits our citizens, our county staff, and of course, the animals in our communities. I think I speak on behalf of many area animal lovers, pet owners, neighbors, taxpayers, rescuers, and advocates when I say there are a multitude of issues that need addressing. The creation of an animal advisory board seems to be a logical first step. Once up and running, the advisory board can tackle things like decreasing kill rates, increasing adoption and redemption rates, budgeting that includes money for food and vet care, a volunteer program, a community outreach coordinator, a public education campaign, a modern payment collection system, an overhaul of the county animal protection laws and true enforcement of those laws, shelter hours that are convenient for working families, improving the emotional well-being of shelter staff, and there's probably many other things. I know this sounds overwhelming and impossible, but there are a lot of shelters and rescue groups nationwide who have achieved these impossible goals. Just a couple of counties over, there's an animal shelter that can brag of a historically low euthanasia rate of only 6% and attributes their success to a dedicated staff, implementation of inventive programs, volunteer support, collaboration with over 50 different rescue groups, a TNR program, an advisory board, support from commissioners and county manager, public support and donations of in-kind products, money, and supplies. I'm speaking of the Granville County Animal Shelter. Programs like theirs and so many others have laid the groundwork. We just have to follow it. Commissioners Floyd and Speed indicated their support for these ideas with our last board. I also understand that as new members, Commissioners Pierce and London are also willing to address these issues. I would like to thank each of them for listening and also reaching out to part of our core group. In closing, I hope you are as enthusiastic as we are about partnering with all of us and the staff at the shelter for the good of the animals in our community and to also soon have some bragging rights that we can rival those in Granville County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan, for that. Mr. Floyd, I have Scott Strickland. Mr. Strickland, good evening. If you would state your name and address for the board, we have five minutes yielded to you tonight to share with us. Mr. Strickland, can you hear us? Can you hear me? Mr. Strickland?
All right, we're back to unmute. I got you now.
All right, I can hear you fine. Please state your name and address for us and proceed with what you'd like to share.
Scott Strickland, 40, Sheilas Lane, Lewisburg, North Carolina, 27549. I agree, we got some problems with animal control, but I think we got a great group of folks working over there. I mean, they've come a long way. The director is doing a great job with low help. They need more help over there. That's a given. I mean, they just can't handle all the calls that they've got. And I do think creating this board and would create some relief for her as well as the county manager of the issues that we're having. That's enough on that. I'd like to thank Mr. Levine for his new traffic pattern. That is the one force thing I've ever seen work. It works and no issue whatsoever with this last traffic over hit airport both days. Where are we on the broadband? I haven't heard anything, hadn't seen anything, no emails here lately. The guy told me to be back with me in a month, and it's been about a month, and I hadn't seen anything. I just, I don't, I'm just disgusted with that whole process because it's just taking them too long. Centralics now coming out with the fiber, and we ain't got nowhere with our broadband. Yes, we got customers, but we don't have customers like we should have. And issue, the county give a lot of great money, and we just wasted. I mean, it's like the money was wasted on this radio system we got. I mean, that's another issue that we got to come to a head. I mean, I can't say enough about that with these guys out here on the road with this radio system we got. It is so bad that cell phones, even the cell phone don't work across county, but it's a lot better than what we got. But that's all I got with that tonight. Thank you for your time, and happy Valentine's to all the ladies, the ladies. But anyway, I appreciate everything y'all do.
Thank you, Mr. Strickland. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that was the remainder of public comments that sign up for tonight. So we will move on to item number three on our agenda, which is a public hearing. And tonight we have our Economic Development Commission Director, Ms. Richie Duncan, who is going to share with us more information about this topic. Mr. Floyd, do you see Ms. Duncan logged in? Or is Ms. Duncan, is Mr. Kieran gonna do that?
I think Koi's bringing him on now.
Very good. Thank you.
All righty. Can you hear me, Chairman?
Yes, ma'am, I can. Welcome.
All right, great. Well, pleased to be here tonight. Thank you so much for your time. It is always a pleasure to come before y'all when we have the opportunity to support one of our businesses growing here in Franklin County. And tonight I'm joined by Andy Cahoon, who is our existing industry coordinator, and we're also joined by Paul Robertson, who is the CEO of Pals of North America. And it is another expansion of Pals of North America that we wanted to chat with you about tonight and ask for your support. I think most of you are familiar with the company, but just as a little bit of background and debrief, it is located on Highway 56 in Lewisburg. And as you will know, they came here in 2009 occupying what used to be the Han Furniture Company and turning it into a really state-of-the-art manufacturing facility for cross-linked foam-based products. And this location is the North American headquarters for Pals of, so we are delighted that they chose Franklin County as their headquarters. Their current employment is 174 people. Okay, Andy, if you'll move to the next. This is the expansion opportunity that we wanted to discuss with you tonight. It is proposed to start in second quarter of 2021, so right around the corner, and proposed completion would be in the first quarter of 2022. What has happened is we have a company that is producing such a high-quality product that there has been a marked increase in demand for this product, which is fantastic. And so they want to make the capital investments that will help them continue to grow their product line, and that would include the items that you see highlighted here. Replacement of existing roll line with a brand-new roll line valued at $4,500,000, a new laminator at $450,000, a new packing machine at $250,000, and the estimated taxable investment on all of these together is $5,200,000. And this is going to be the fifth expansion for Pals of since coming to Franklin County. And in conjunction with our incentive policy, as you may be familiar, there's two criteria that this particular expansion would meet. One of those is job creation, which we are delighted when we get new jobs. Equally as important is job retention. And so with this particular investment, what Pals of will be doing is they will be retaining 15 jobs by adding in this new roll line. And with the new laminator, they're going to actually create another 15 new jobs and five new administrative jobs. So we're not only retaining 15 jobs on one line, but we are now going to create 20 new jobs. We're very excited about that. And the wage rate for these jobs, it's an average of $35,640, and you can see the types of jobs that they are. And again, in conjunction with our incentive policy, very important that the companies offer the two things that you see here, and Pals of does both of these, health insurance and retirement benefits for their employees. Okay? Now, we work, as you know, with Dan Williams, our tax administrator, whenever we're going to bring one of these to you, to have him break down the investment and look at it in the terms of our incentive policy. This expansion will be a value of $5,200,000 new on the tax books. Our incentive request is 3% of that investment for a total of $156,000. This would be paid out over a four-year time period, and so that would equal $39,000 per year for four years, and it is only paid after their taxes are paid. Okay? Now, we did work with the state of North Carolina, as we always do, to see if there is an opportunity for further enhancements of this with them. And the state of North Carolina is supporting this expansion as well by providing funding for customized training for those new employees. And the estimate is up to about 1,100 per job for each of those 20 jobs. So there's a potential of 22,000 in funding for customized training, and this would be done in conjunction with Vance Granville Community College. Okay, next slide. And now we have with us Paul Robertson, and he is the CEO of We're very proud of you, Paul. He has been promoted to CEO and has been great to work with over the years. Paul, I'm going to turn it over to you, and feel free to share with the commissioners any of your thoughts. And commissioners, we will also open it up for you to ask questions to Mr. Robertson.
Absolutely. Thank you, Richie, and thank you for letting me speak and having this opportunity to shed a little bit of light on the expansion and also brag a little bit. First of all, I'd like to say that the relationship between Pals of and Franklin County from the beginning has been very, very good. And we do try to employ, a lot of our associates are from the area and the surrounding areas. So I think we are one of the major employers of the county, and we really like to tout that because that's, they're good employees. And we, I want to go back just a little bit at the beginning of 2020, when we started into the COVID crisis. And I just want to really talk about the employees and some of the local people that we have in Franklin County. We, as a group, we took about a 40% hit in annual revenue in the second quarter when the COVID crisis was at its peak. And we chose to continue to run and just build stock because we felt like the mental and physical health of our employees meant a lot. And we wanted, we knew that they had to bring income home to their families. So it's not only the employees, but the families. And I know you hear this a lot, but at Pals of, we are very family-focused, and we are like a family. So that is something that we live by. But anyway, so we chose to keep the team together, build stock, and we did a tremendous job of keeping the crisis and the pandemic away. We, I think, even to date, we've only had four or five cases of the COVID-19 in our employee base. We jumped out immediately and started checking temperatures, you know, when you couldn't get a thermometer. We actually used, because we have ovens, we used equipment that's used by testing the oven temperatures. And we figured out, and with a lot of studies and working with the companies, found out how to measure body temperature. You know, you couldn't buy those. Hand sanitizer, you know, in February, I actually called a buddy of mine who owned a chemical company and purchased 192 gallons of hand sanitizer. So if any of you guys need hand sanitizer, I have it. And we started actually giving it away to the employees in spray bottles, and we bottled it ourselves, and we gave it to them and anybody in their family that wanted it, we gave hand sanitizer to. We also, we couldn't get masks, so I brought two sewing machines up to the plant, and the office personnel actually sewed masks for every one of our employees. So we did all of this in February, March. I just, I just felt like that was a good thing to mention just to tell you how the team works at Pals of and how it's a group effort and how by doing that, we continued to run, and then we were blessed. We were blessed in two ways. Number one, unplanned, but the COVID caused people to stay at home. And when people stay at home, they started looking at ways to improve their homes. And that comes with replacing flooring, replacing tile, replacing, and we actually make an under laminate for Home Depot. And we also make a carpet cushion for Home Depot. And those sales skyrocketed, and also Home Depot chose to give us their brand. So we actually are now the life-proof brand on carpet cushion, and we have now the challenge of supplying 2,300 stores across the United States with carpet cushion made here in Franklin County. So they, if you go to Home Depot, you will soon see our product, and that is part of, and this is a long story to lead up to why we are expanding. Part of the reason is we have to have a laminate, a laminator, and so we had to buy the laminator. Also, we had to buy the roll line, which is a four-and-a-half-million-dollar investment because we needed to increase the capacity there. And on another kind of a smaller, but also a big portion of some of the increase in sales is recreation. We make lake floats, and we make, and we also make gymnastic mats and mats for gym use. And guess what? When people were staying at home, they were buying, and their kids were not going to school, so they started buying mats online so their kids could have some activities. And guess what? People started going out and visiting the lake because they could get, and they started buying floats. And so that is part of our And they started buying floats. And so that is part of our home. But, you know, we've been blessed and the expansion is something that we are proud of. And I think it's some of the good decisions that we made along with our employees that helped facilitate that. And, you know, with some good luck and some good decision-making, we're in this position. And I appreciate the help in working with Richie and other members of Franklin County leadership because it is a very good thing for this community. And actually, I think the number of employees that we will hire is understated. I currently need about twenty-four employees already without the expansion. So if you go by our plant, you'll see the big sign that says, you know, jobs available. So we are still looking for good employees and we continue to be strong financially. And a lot of this is from the help of, you know, the community. And, you know, we want to be a good steward to the community. And thank you, thank you, guys, for letting me ramble on. But I thought it was a good chance for me to brag a little bit about the employees and our associates, a lot of whom are local families. And that's the one thing that I, when I wake up in the morning, my why is to make sure that every employee provides something for their family. And so that's why I make the decisions that we make. So thank you very much, and we want to continue to grow. We're expanding not only here, and I will mention this, that we also are expanding in Mexico. We're going to start making foam in Mexico. And then the next step, which would probably be in two thousand twenty-two, is because it costs so much to ship foam, we'll probably be looking at the West Coast and adding another facility out there. So we are just, we're blessed and we're fortunate and we are so grateful to be here in this area. And so thank you very much. And if you have any questions, I will try to field them. And if I can't, I'll be diligent to get back with you.
All right. Thank you for that, sir. Thank you. Ms. Duncan, you have anything else to add tonight?
Well, I will just ask again, are there any questions that you have of Mr. Robertson?
Board, any questions for Mr. Robertson tonight?
Not hearing any questions. I do want to again thank you, Paul, for being here tonight. And you have done a great job of leading Palsiv and making this a true North American headquarters. And we're delighted that it's here in Franklin County. So our action requested tonight is, at the conclusion of this public hearing, we would ask that you consider approval of the incentive request. And I believe in keeping with the rules of an electronic meeting, that the incentive request approval would have to come at the next meeting or at a later date. But our request is for the approval of the incentive.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Duncan, for that. Commissioners, any comments or follow-up questions to the presentation you just heard?
What's one question?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I think, Richard, your last talk, talk about the investment of tax value in terms of dollars that were added to the county's tax department. That amount of money?
Yes, sir. That'll be.
And that will be what?
It'll be five million two hundred thousand dollars added to tax value.
Okay.
Five point two million.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, absolutely, sir.
Anyone else questions?
Mr. Chairman, comment, please?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank Paul because that was a very good presentation that he gave. Good presentation from Richie in the beginning, but a good elaboration from Paul. I believe that I'm hearing things that you don't normally hear from large companies as far as reaching out to help employees. And I, for one, am very appreciative of his efforts.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Pierce. Any other comments tonight? Hearing none, our next step then is to open a public hearing for public comment. I realize we are virtual, but we will take this proper step. So are there any public comments?
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder, I didn't have any previous sign-ups. We may want to check with information technology just to make sure that no one has their hand raised.
Very good. Commissioner Floyd, I mean, not Commissioner, permission there. Mr. Floyd?
No, sir. I don't see any hands raised at the moment.
Very good. All right. Well, having no hands raised and not hearing any further comments, I will call this public hearing closed. In doing so, no action can be taken tonight. We have a twenty-four-hour rule. And so our goal would be to put this on the next agenda for this board's consideration and supporting this request, which would be March fifteenth. And one final thing before I move on, it's always helpful to ask our county attorney. Mr. Sturgis, have I missed anything with regards to this public hearing process?
No, Mr. Chairman, I believe you have covered it. I think, you know, we've had the public hearing and I'll decide when to have the actual vote, which, you know, either be at a special call meeting or the next regular meeting.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you for that, then. Then we will then move on to item number four on our agenda tonight, which is a COVID, COVID nineteen update by Mr. Scott Levine. Mr. Levine, good evening, sir. Thank you, Paul. Mr. Floyd, we're looking for Mr. Levine. His hand is raised. I have Elisa Levine showing up on my attendees with a hand raised.
I'll see it now. Okay.
Very good. Good evening, Mr. Levine. Can you hear me, sir?
Yep, I can hear you. It looks like I made, yeah, I'm not least, I'm playing the part of my wife this evening. It's my wife's computer. I'm doing the meeting from home. Doesn't appear like I can get my video going, so that's probably fine. As I've done in meetings past, just a brief recap of where we're at with the virus. And then I'm going to move right into vaccines at this point. Okay, here we go. There.
No mask. Congratulations.
Anyway, good to be maskless for a change. So right now in Franklin County, for the history of the pandemic, we have five thousand and forty-nine total reported lab-confirmed cases. That's a large number, but it's over the course of almost a year now, if you can believe that. Our current positivity rate is actually trending down, which is very encouraging. Was up as high as eleven percent for a while. It's now down to seven point seven percent. So for all the tests that are being done, only seven point seven percent of them are coming back positive. So that's a good, good sign. Our total cases have started to decline in the county. You know, they're still at a slightly elevated level. And, you know, so we're going to continue to watch that. But at this point, I think some of the efforts around wearing face coverings are starting to pay off. That's going to be especially important as some of the variants strains start to take hold in the U.S. and particularly in North Carolina. So I'm going to kind of move away from the active phase of the virus to start talking about vaccines. So far, and I just pulled these numbers off the state website. They have us as, down as administering six thousand nine hundred and eight first doses and two thousand eight hundred and six second doses of vaccine for a total of nine thousand seven hundred and fourteen total doses of vaccine delivered. I couldn't be prouder of the team that we have assembled doing this effort. They are just a phenomenal group of people to work with. The collaboration is truly spectacular. And I really am very grateful for Bo Carson and our being able to use the Triangle North Executive Airport. That is, with the rerouted traffic, that's looking to be a very, very good opportunity for us to ramp up. To give you an idea of how things are going right now, this week with this primarily second doses driving the bus because our first dose allocation now has dropped down to nine hundred a week. So we're not getting more than nine hundred doses of first dose to go out the door. But this week, because of some huge efforts three and four weeks ago, we're slated to have to put out close to three thousand doses in two days. And so we are, we are set up for our first event tomorrow. We'll have roughly around twelve to fourteen hundred people that will be coming. For tomorrow will be an all-second dose event. And then Thursday, weather permitting, and we're praying that it's, the bad weather is going to bypass us because getting something like this rescheduled is really difficult. But on Thursday, we could have the balance of that, which could be anywhere from sixteen to some of our estimates are showing around eighteen hundred doses going out. And eighteen hundred, sixteen hundred would be our highest ever. That's what I have our maximum capacity at for the location. But we've never really tested that to see how far we can go. So we're going to probably put that to the test, weather permitting, on Thursday. Let's see, I guess the only other thing I want to talk about, and then I can open it up to questions, two more things. Tonight, we launched our first dose vaccine online booking system. We did that in order to cut down on some of the back and forth that we have to engage with people. It slows down their being able to get in and get registered and get their appointments. And so we established this system. We beta-tested it over the weekend. We've been running it now for a little while where we've been doing all the data entry. And we just added it to a link on the county's COVID alert page. If you go to the COVID alert page, you'll see at the top of the page when there'll be a red box that'll allow you to click on that. If you're looking to get your first dose, it's going to ask you a series of questions, which will determine if you're eligible. If you're determined to be eligible and we have any first-dose appointments available, you'll be directed to those available first-dose appointments. For this week, the number is going to be relatively small because we've had a number of people we've been putting into those that called us. And we're reducing down that overall nine hundred. So if you called tonight and clicked on that link or went onto that link, you're not going to see nine hundred doses available for Thursday because we have to put some people who have called us and have been waiting for us to enter them in into some of those slots. So we're going to try to be fair to the people that have gotten ahead. And we want to continue to allow new people to come in. And so that's how we're going about doing it. So eventually, as people become more comfortable with the technology, especially as we work our way into some of the other groups, you know, populations that may be a little more technology-friendly and have access to computers a little bit more, hopefully, we'll be able to see that used a lot more. It's pretty heavily utilized, even with the over sixty-five population. And even quite honestly, with the over seventy-five population, it was utilized way more than we had anticipated. So that's, that's a really good sign. Last week, the governor announced that we would be eligible or they would be expanding the list of eligible people to receive the vaccine on February twenty-fourth to include everyone that works in a school, be it public, private charter and/or a daycare center. A conservative estimate of how many people that would entail in Franklin County is roughly about three thousand people. To give you an idea of what I'm about to say next, there are twelve thousand people over the age of sixty-five in Franklin County. You just heard that I've only pushed out six thousand nine hundred and eight first doses. And some of those went to healthcare providers. We have by no means offered everyone in the sixty-five and over age category an opportunity to get the vaccine. So until that number comes up and still, until we see the demand for this vaccine from the over sixty-five population starting to decrease, we will not be accepting any requests for teachers or anyone in a school or daycare until February twenty-fourth, when we are obligated to start taking those. But we are also telling everyone, recognize that taking your application, taking your information will not guarantee you a shot because we have about, a conservative estimate right now, we've probably got about three thousand people that are ahead of you in line that have already registered, that are already waiting in that sixty-five and over population. So we want to be clear that as soon as we get, if by some chance we get more doses of first-dose vaccine and we can increase and we can jump on expanding to that, that that population of teachers and daycare centers, we will definitely do that. But, you know, I need to be clear that, you know, it is totally driven by the vaccine that we have and our commitment to ensuring that the people who are most likely to die if they contract this virus have an opportunity to receive the vaccine first. And so that's kind of where we're at right now. I'll open it up to any questions that anyone might have.
Any questions for Mr. Levine tonight?
Chairman, sorry, I have two questions actually from Mr. Levine.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Levine, I want to thank you for everything that you're doing to help combat the, this pandemic. I'm sure that it's, it's been tough, but thank you and your staff and all of our frontline workers for the work that you all are doing. My first question is, you spoke of the online booking system. Is there an alternative to that, just in case a Franklin County resident does not have access to the internet?
Yes. So basically, what they would do is they would call the COVID Vax line and leave their name and number. We have six National Guard troops that we have thoroughly trained who are actually returning a lot of those calls. We also have people from our own library that have been trained and are returning those calls. And some of my staff, what we're doing now with this new system is we're taking their information and then we give them the appointment. So we're able to do that with them. We have a list of, it was actually probably about twelve pages long of phone numbers and of people that checked away. A lot of those people had already received the vaccine either by us or in another county. Some of those people had already gotten an appointment scheduled. And then from that, we were able to drill down to get the people that are still left remaining. And we have started to contact those people. So we're reserving some of that nine hundred first dose each week to make sure that those people are going to get in because they were the first, they were ahead. So we're contacting those people first, trying to get as many of them into those slots before we open it up to anybody else. And we're able to do that because we don't open the first dose, which we deliver now exclusively on Thursday because that's when we get the vaccine and can roll it out. So that allows us to say, we're not going to open up that first dose for the outside general public until we've made these people on the list have been given an opportunity.
Okay, thank you. And I just have one, one more question. What are the health department's efforts going to be? What will they take in order to drive up numbers in our minority communities here in the county? I went on the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services website and I noticed that seventeen point eight percent of, seventeen point eight-six percent of African-Americans in the county have only received their first doses compared to another demographic. So what efforts will the health department take in order to address that?
Yeah, and what I did is, basically, we've been looking at that, too. One of the reasons that we get an additional dose is, there are two reasons. We get an equity dose of three hundred additional doses above our population base. And the reason we get that is to address the fact that we have a higher percentage of people over sixty-five in Franklin County than other counties. And the second piece is that when you look at African-Americans in particular, they represent a close to twenty-five percent of the over sixty-five population. When you look at that number of saying seventeen percent are only getting it, it's actually creeped up a little bit. It went up now to eighteen point something percent. I just checked before I came online. And, but we are very aware that that number is not where we want it to be. So we've done a couple of things. We are looking at twofold. One, you know, some of the issues relate to our online and trying to break down some barriers there. Although a lot of people don't have an issue with that. Transportation, given our location, can be an issue for a lot of people. And so what we've begun to do is Um, and so what we've begun to do is, um, we're using our public health educators to identify particularly churches and leaders in the community that we can reach out to. We have partnered with Karts. We actually had them out at our vaccine clinic last week. They have money available to get people free of charge to our vaccine clinics. So last week on Tuesday, thank God it was a nice day. Karts was out there. They saw our operation at the airport. We worked with them to discuss what they would need to do. They can bring multiple people into that location free of charge. Um, and people would need to just make an appointment. And we posted that link on our COVID Vax Alert page or COVID Alert page on the county website. And we're going to be really pushing that out. So I think that those two things are a start. We also need to really, um, I think there are some barriers in terms of adoption of the vaccine. I am encouraged because when I break down and look at the percentage of first dose and second dose people, um, we've got our, like an 18% on the first dose and a 14% on second dose for African Americans in particular. And, and when I look at that, that says to me that that 14%, those are the people that we started outreach. 18% is probably the improvement where we're at. 25% and more is really where I want to be. So we are definitely tracking that. Anecdotally, I can tell you, um, last Thursday, I, I saw just about everybody that came through the line. I can tell you that just anecdotally, all that data wasn't entered in and to make it into some of the statistics that, that we're showing right now. But looking at the folks that were coming through last Thursday, I can tell right away that we've started to have some benefit and some of that outreach effort. So I'm, I'm encouraged by that. By no means are we close. When we're coming in at 18 and prevalence is 25, that's not where we want to be. So we are definitely looking to change that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, any other questions tonight? Mr. Levine, as always, we thank you for everything, uh, you are doing and all those that are doing it with you. Um, I do want to also emphasize, um, I'd be curious to know how many volunteers you have roughly.
Well, um, tomorrow we'll have probably about 75 to 80 total volunteers. That includes law enforcement on the, on the roads. We'll have about 12 sheriff's deputies, um, um, one person from the state highway patrol. We have local law enforcement that, that volunteers, local fire department volunteers. We have the civil air patrol. We have representatives from county departments across, um, all county departments. Parks and rec has been a huge participant. Our tax office has been a huge participant. DSS has been phenomenally a great partner. And, uh, um, actually economic development has been a partner as well. We've had representation from so many different departments and, uh, civil air patrol is going to be really, um, has been very, very helpful. And, and that's just the people that are actually outside tomorrow and Thursday. And I can tell you that it takes a whole mountain of people just to get those 75 to be able to run that clinic. We have, we'll leave behind our six National Guard, um, workers at the, uh, agency tomorrow, who will be entering in information and getting people all lined up for Thursday's vaccination clinic. We have the library that continues to call people to get them. So we just have a mountain of people doing this. We'll also have through some additional COVID dollars. We'll have 10 paid, um, individuals that will be starting this Thursday, they'll be coming, um, in the afternoon on Wednesday for an orientation. And then they'll be starting on Thursday, um, to help us, um, be able to spell some of our people, but also to expand our operations. And they'll be working right outside with us in the vaccine clinic. So it takes, uh, it's a huge undertaking. If you get a chance to come out and take a walk, um, just let us know you're coming and we can tell you which way to go and they'll let you in. It's, it's really good to watch. The people are just phenomenally grateful and, and, and pleasant. And, you know, I can tell you that, um, it's been really heartening to see things like, you know, we had somebody who had a, a, a radiator leak and somebody went and, and one of the, our, our team went and got radiator fluid and brought it back, filled it up, talked to a technician, they were able to get him off site so that he could get his car fixed. Last, uh, this past Thursday, somebody, um, ran out of gas and we were able to get some money together, get them some gas so they could get out. I saw a national, uh, civil air patrolman helping somebody change a tire. You know, th- this is not what we signed up for, but this is what you do when people are coming through the line. And everybody has commented, we just have a good time while we're doing it. It's just, it's just a great experience to be able to help somebody and to have them, you know, they want, I, I always tell everybody, you know, when they joke, boy, that line's long. And I say, apparently we have something that y'all want. And they all, uh, they all get that and have a great time doing it. So.
Very good.
Um, and it, and I couldn't ask for a better crew. Every morning we have a huddle.
Very good. Well, look, I thank you for that. And my, my interest in that was just simply twofold. One is to, uh, to just recognize and encourage other people to volunteer. Uh, and I knew there were volunteers out there and I think that's a great testament to just the very fabric of the citizens of our county and their, and their generosity and good heartedness. So I think it's wonderful to hear that. And then also I'm just want to also encourage others, uh, you know, go be a part of something bigger than yourself. It's, it's a great opportunity to, to give back and to, um, and to be a part of something bigger than yourself. So thank you again for all your comments and all your hard work. And please, uh, for those that don't hear, please share and echo what we shared tonight, which is our, our sincere gratitude for everything that people are doing.
I certainly will. I'll be sharing when you want. Thank you.
Thank you. Take care. All right. Uh, item number five on our agenda tonight is an update, uh, from our Franklin County School System. Uh, tonight we have the pleasure of having our school superintendent, Dr. Rhonda Schuler, uh, with us. Good evening, Dr. Schuler.
Good evening. I am going to pull up my presentation. I think you, let me make sure that you can see.
We're seeing it so far.
Oh, good. Okay. Perfect. Good evening, Chairman Schreiber, members of the Board of Commissioners, Ms. Denton and guests with us this evening. Tonight I'm here to provide you with an update, uh, that we provide annually each year, our State of the District for Franklin County Schools. And although the format is not what we ideally would like, we do like to come together and have this opportunity with our face-to-face meeting. I'm going to try to touch on a few of the elements that I think you're accustomed to hearing as part of that State of the District. And I also would like to highlight some of the things that have made our school system operations unique this past year, as you all well know, uh, the specifically the impact of COVID-19. And then I'll wrap up with some challenges, some successes and identified priorities for us going forward that you'll see as part of that budget development process. I will be presenting myself, but I do have Dr. Larry Webb, who is on standby. He's actually on, uh, the call. Uh, he's our chief of auxiliary services and deals with our facilities and operations. And Ms. Quinn Lee Coley, who is our chief of finance. Um, and then I also have, uh, board members with us in the audience. Our cabinet members are with us in the audience, our board chair, page sales as well. So, um, we're all here this evening to give you some updates on our district and answer any questions that you may have. So I'll go ahead and get started. So the purpose is to provide you with an overview of the work that has been taking place in Franklin County Schools. And it goes without saying, this year has been unprecedented for us. We have a lot of appreciation. I say this personally as a citizen within Franklin County and also as superintendent of Franklin County Schools. It, there's a great deal of appreciation for being part of a community that values public education and the important role that it plays in our collective success as a community. And on behalf of the Franklin County Schools Board of Education, we are grateful for the partnership that we've had and continue to have with you all. So just a quick overview, our people, this is our team. We have seven board members, um, and, uh, these board members have been, many of them have been with our, um, district for quite some time. Uh, and they provided steady leadership as, you know, that's especially important in a time like what we're dealing with, with COVID-19. So I'm very appreciative for our Board of Education. Our cabinet, um, these are the folks who work, um, closely with me to, to do the day-to-day work. And probably the ones you would deal with most often would be Dr. Larry Webb, who's with us. And he, he deals with our facilities and, um, and operations. And Quinn Lee Coley, who's our chief of finance. You'll probably hear from them most often. And this is just a, an org chart. So all of this will be uploaded and you'll have access if you want to spend more time delving into that. I don't want to take too much of your time this evening. Our schools, we have 16 schools. Um, and so this is a breakdown of our school, our principal, assistant principals and location, um, of each of our schools. To give you a sense of our numbers and a breakdown, um, we have eight elementary schools, four middle, three high and an early college. We have enrollment at 7,956 students right now. And you can see the demographic breakdown there as well. This is actually a screen grab of a report that ORE Ed did for us a couple of years ago. As we are looking at capacity and future growth within our county, they've done a breakdown of where they project our system's enrollment to be all the way, they look historically all the way. They did this report in 2018, 19, all the way to 2028, 29 for planning purposes. Uh, you will see that we've seen kind of a downward trajectory with enrollment. They anticipate that we're kind of at the flattening of that curve and we're going to see an upward trajectory, uh, based on their predictions. This is interesting. This is the enrollment forecast from ORE Ed. It's an out-of-capacity table for them and it actually is interesting. It just shows each of our schools in a breakdown of capacity and when they're predicted to be and the kind of at capacity, over capacity, kind of as a warning to, in looking ahead. I think it's interesting that in the midst of a pandemic, they predicted before we ever thought COVID-19 would exist, that we would be 7962 and we're at 7956, which is pretty remarkably close under the circumstances. So I think the big takeaway from these numbers is to recognize that we're, we will need to continue to monitor the capacity of our facilities and our enrollment. And we recognize as a district that we, we will likely sooner rather than later have to revisit and reconsider specific student assignment boundaries in order to manage that future growth that, that we just took a look at. This will be easier for us to project once we have emerged from our pandemic response and can better gauge enrollment patterns. So I think that we'll have a better sense of where to go next with that. When things level out, which we're hopeful will be, um, by mid-year next year, we'll have seen kind of a settling, a leveling and have a better sense of, of how that all has shaken out and be able to begin looking at, um, that larger, uh, student assignment enrollment, uh, piece. But I did want you to have that information. So here's some basic data and some facts and figures about the district. Our funding, this is something you see each year in much more detail. I'm not going to get deeply into the funding piece tonight. I will say that we balance our funding for schools most heavily at the state level. And they give us, um, allotments that get revised at points throughout the year. So this is where we are, uh, currently with our state funds, uh, for this year. Our federal funds, um, are at nine million, uh, 9.6 million. And then our local funds were almost at almost 22 million, which does not include, uh, capital outlay specifically. So we have received COVID, you probably heard a little bit in the news about COVID relief funds for districts. We have received funding and are anticipating that we're going to receive more funding, specifically, uh, based on the COVID-19 response. We actually, they had something called ESSER, E-S-S-E-R, ESSER 1, which was funding that was the elementary and secondary emergency relief funds. And they were provided to schools to help offset the impact of COVID last spring into the school year. And then, uh, we anticipate that we will receive additional funding, later this spring or maybe this summer in support of this. I will say a couple of things about these funds. They're very, uh, specific in their purpose and they support things like making sure that students, um, receive additional support if they're struggling academically as a result of COVID. Making sure we have digital tools and resources for students in their hands. Looking at things like how to provide Wi-Fi access to students as a bridge if they don't have that access at home. Looking at, uh, PPE and, uh, cleaning and supplies, uh, to mitigate the impact of the virus in the school setting. Very specific, um, purposes for that, that funding. And that will also carry through in the next round of funding that we receive. So as we're looking at budget priorities, we're thinking in terms of what specifically we're going to need to have in place to respond to COVID-19. Um, and that's how those funds have to be used. I did want to show you that because that's something we'll get into more as we move into the budget development process. But I think it's important for you all to know that, um, and have a little bit of information about that. This is the last reporting year that we had of student performance data. I, I do think it's, it's great, uh, to highlight, um, although we don't have new data based on last year. We were, we went for, from 2014, 15, having seven low performing schools out of 16 to having zero low performing schools out of 16, um, over the course of a five-year period. So we're very proud of that. We recognize that in the situation that we're in, um, we're going to have gaps to fill and, and we're going to have a lot of work to do. But we are proud of where we, um, where we have been and, and the progress that we've made. And I'm confident that we have the mindset and commitment, uh, to move forward and get on the other side of this with a positive outcome. But I did want to highlight that data in terms of, this gives you a perception of where we were with the last reporting year and how other school districts percentages of low performing within the district, within our region. Just by comparison. So we're very proud of that. Our graduation rate is at 85.2%. The state average is at 87.6. We usually hover right below that state average. We have some very specific strategies that are, uh, being put in place to address this as part of the strategic plan, which I'll share a little bit about later. I do want to talk a little bit about our COVID-19 journey and where we've been. It's been an interesting year. It's been almost a full year now and we, it has been a journey and it's, I said, I've said sometimes I feel like I'm running a marathon and I don't know where the finish line is, is what it's like. It really is. But, uh, I'm very proud of our, our team and the work that they've done, um, working with students, uh, navigating this. Just to give you some background, last spring, not almost at this point, um, we had to shift quickly to remote learning. All public schools, everyone was sent home. And we had a combination of, some students had devices. Uh, we had them six 12 primarily. And then we used a combination of technology and packets. And by that, I mean, good old fashioned, stick it in a packet, run copies and hand it off to families. That's what we did. We distributed meals, we had school sites, community hubs, delivery. We were told to shut things down and we were told by the state that we had a two-week grace period where we could plan, but we didn't do that. We kept instruction going. We took about two workdays to come up with a plan because we didn't feel like our, our kids needed to have two weeks of downtime without an instructional plan. So we, we jumped up, I say we, our staff, our teachers jumped right in and made it happen. Distributing meals, uh, we identified schools for Wi-Fi access and we began long-range planning. I knew pretty instantly that the idea that we were going to be closed, uh, for a month or so was probably not realistic based on the progression of the virus. We wrapped up the school year, we had a pre-recorded graduation ceremony. So things were definitely not business as usual for us last year. So summer, we were asked by the state, uh, Department of Public Instruction and the Department of Health and Human Services, they gave us detailed rules and recommendations. It, the document is, is well over a The document is, is well over 100 pages long. And so when you hear people say, why does the school system have to do this and follow this rule and that rule? We have a guidebook, and it is very specific in terms of what we have to do in order to operate with each of these plans. So we had to come up with three plans. A Plan A, which would be social distancing not required, but masks, health and safety screenings in place in our schools. Plan B would be a hybrid of instruction where we reduce the capacity of the building and have 50% of students potentially in the building at a time, social distancing of six feet required, and then all those other safety protocols. And then Plan C was remote learning only. So during the summer, while we were planning, we provided meals. We provided from March to August over 500,000 meals in Franklin County within the community. We had school sites pick up. We had hubs. We did some delivery. We got a lot of meals out in a short amount of time. We began planning for virtual academy or a remote learning only option for families. We surveyed parents and staff on comfort level for return in fall. We would have had really early and purchased devices. I knew that we would have a backlog of ordering, and we would all be competing for the same resources. So in March, early April, we started ordering devices. So we would have a device for every child pre-K 12 in the district. Pre-K 1 got tablets, 212 got Chromebooks, and we got those distributed before the start of the school. There were districts that didn't have devices even as late as December, they were on backorder. So we were fortunate that we got in when we did on that. We also went, got creative work with United Way and got surplus furniture desks that were not being used out to families so they could set up workstations in their homes. We distributed over 600 KJTs or personal hotspots, which were purchased through a combination of our PERS Act funding and donations from United Way and NovaZons so that families that didn't have internet access could have hotspots for their homes to access instruction. So we returned to under Plan C, which was remote learning only. We were given an option when we started the school year of a Plan B, which is half and half, or a Plan C, which was remote learning only. It was difficult. You know, we've said along the way, we've learned and we've made adjustments. So early on, we looked at significant concerns from staff based on health and safety, returning on Plan B. 48% of our families elected to remain virtual because of health and safety concerns. At that point, we were told to look at community metrics like percent positivity at 5%. There were kind of arbitrary metrics the state was recommending. There was limited data on the impact of COVID in schools, and about half of the counties of North Carolina, including all of our neighbors, elected to operate under Plan C. So we began the year under Plan C. We had direct instruction daily. We did not do packets. We have worked to make sure we provide internet access to families that don't have it and ways for them to access instruction. And we provided both synchronous or interactive and asynchronous daily when we did Plan C. We continued to provide deals. We had the hotspots. We had Wi-Fi in parking lots, Wi-Fi in community, in areas of the community with limited service. We elicited help from businesses and churches to service Wi-Fi access points, continued to provide tech support to families, had counseling support, social workers. We have a protocol for safe home visits, parent conferences, and we've really worked hard to over communicate with our families on where we are in the work that we're doing. So the health department originally, this is an example of what we were looking at. You know, looking at our positivity, we looked at a couple of indicators, positivity rate, percent of confirmed cases, and total cases and rate of testing. But then we joined the ABC Science Collaborative. You may have read about them. They've had some, some information published over the past couple of weeks. The CDC has referenced them. It's a group of doctors and epidemiologists from Duke who have a National Institute of Health grant, and they've studied specifically the impact of COVID-19 on schools. Here's what they had to say, and this was in September that we started working with them. This is going to be a long-term problem. This is not a short-term problem. At that point, they were saying it could be third or fourth quarter of 2021 before children were vaccinated, that we needed to be less reliant on metrics such as positivity rate, and that more importantly, we needed to make sure we did, we practiced fidelity with mitigation of techniques like masking, screening, social distancing, that we implemented with fidelity, the expectation that masks are non-negotiable on campus, and that if we could maintain staffing, that we could safely operate under Plan B and not have teacher to teacher or student, student or student to teacher transmission. So we shifted to Plan B at that point. You learn more, you do something different, you make adjustments. So we phased in a Plan B, started with our lower grades. Now, we'll say this, one thing that helped us tremendously is we had staff reporting beginning school year. Some districts have had their staff working at home. We brought our staff in from day one. We worked on the mitigation. We worked on making sure that we were following the rules. We had health and safety protocols and developed a comfort level before we introduced students into the school environment. We phased in our students K-12, pre-K 12, and we have a schedule of A group, B group on campus to divide the students into smaller groups. And then we also have a track of students that are going virtual all the time, and we've left that as an option for families at any point. And we've had a large interest in that. Here's some pictures of some of our students. So you'll see they do have masks, but you, you can see smiling eyes. And then we also have students who are eating. They can remove their mask for mealtime. So you see some of them there too. But we are happy to get our students back in school. Here are some of our older ones too. So what we've done, we've tried to be very transparent. We have a dashboard. It's on our website front and center. It's updated each week. This is an example from the 12th of February where we're posting the total current number of positive staff cases, student cases, cumulative cases, clusters, and close school contacts. And we update that each Friday just to keep folks informed. This is a breakdown, is a February 5th of how many families are electing face-to-face and virtual. And what you'll see is not a real surprise that elementary has elected to be more heavily face-to-face. And then high school is more heavily virtual, and the middle school's right in the middle 50/50. So no shock there. But we still have a lot, had a lot of interest in virtual based on the virus and its impact. We've, we've continued with athletics. We've had to do some quarantining along the way, but we have had athletics in place. They do have to wear masks for inside sports. They've adjusted to that. We have operated successfully under Plan B. We did make one adjustment before Christmas break. We are seeing an increase in numbers, and what we've used as the deciding factor to operate has strictly been our ability to staff safely. And we do have challenges with quarantining of staff and cases with staff. So we monitor that regularly. We saw a little bit of an uptick before Christmas break. You've all heard that that was a projection that that was going to be an issue. So we decided to have one week of remote learning following Christmas break to make sure that we could staff the Monday after break, and no surprises there. We then shifted back. We felt like it was manageable, shifted back to Plan B, January 11th, and we're currently operating under this model. I will say we've been somewhat an island on our own. The surrounding districts have remained on Plan C, are shifting back now, but we have felt like we needed to follow what the science said that we could do. And as long as we didn't see evidence of spread in the school environment, we've seen none. We haven't had any transmission issues in the school environment. We've continued to operate. This is some data from the ABC Science Collaborative. They did a study under Plan B, 11 districts, over 90,000 students and staff. They had no confirmed instances of student to adult transmission in the school setting. They had 32 secondary infections, which means I have it and I pass it to you. But those were overwhelmingly due to masks either not being worn or not being worn properly. Last week, the CDC released a report, maybe it was two weeks ago now, regarding the safety of students and staff in the school setting. And there is, the research indicates that schools can operate safely with the health and safety measures of masking, social distancing, and hand washing and hand sanitizing. Last week, we had some updates, or week before last. The governor, the state superintendent, and state board chair gave a joint press conference urging districts to resume face-to-face instruction. There's a Senate bill out there right now that's in a compromise committee. They're working through the details with the Senate and the House that would require schools to offer in-person learning either under Plan A or B, and EC students would receive daily instruction. And Franklin County, as I said, has been operating successfully with face-to-face, where many other districts in the region have not. And we're better prepared in the event that this legislation gets enacted because we've been doing this already. Last week, and Scott alluded to this in his presentation, last week Governor Cooper announced K-12 personnel, school personnel would be in the next round of vaccine prioritization and could be vaccinated beginning February 24. Scott already has all of our data. We have surveyed our staff. We know exactly. We've provided the health department with all, a database of all of our staff who were interested in the vaccine. So we're ready to roll, and I've told him we can mobilize nurses, staff, school staff to help. When the vaccine becomes available, we'll do whatever we can to make sure that our staff are vaccinated. I know that there's a, there's some, there's limited supply. It's been a challenge because there are counties where there have been staff, that school staff have been vaccinated and for various reasons, and people compare notes on that. And, and I know that Scott's been working to, to make sure that we're following the rules, and, and I totally understand that. But we're ready to roll whenever, whenever the supply is there, so. We will continue to monitor the legislation for reopening. We're going to continue to monitor the latest research on the safety and feasibility of Plan A at the elementary level. Some of the challenges, the latest guidance from the CDC still recommends six feet of social distancing for all ages. There are issues with contact tracing and potential large-scale quarantining. If the six feet is not maintained, there are new variants. And then we have some staffing challenges that come that are with a smaller number in school setting. It provides us more flexibility. We're going to continue to advocate for and provide support for vaccination and keep our larger community informed along the way. And I've, this is really a repeat. We're making decisions based on the latest research. One thing I will add is that we are planning, we recognize that some, some type of virtual learning is here to stay. And we are going, we've worked on a virtual academy option for interested families next year that is more detailed, and it would divide out virtual academy classes from regular classes because it's very difficult to do both at the same time. And a draft is, has been shared with the board and is on our website for feedback. So we're working on that plan. All right, so shifting gears. We also, in the midst of all of this, developed a new strategic plan. It's called Franklin County Schools Blueprint 2025. And that work had taken place prior to COVID-19, and we wrapped up the planning process last spring. We've had a blueprint in place, and it was a very concise one-pager with goals and breakdown of those goals for our schools. We wanted something similar to that, student success-driven, forward-thinking, clear and concise, outcomes-oriented. Some lessons learned from our last version is making sure that we have a plan in place for progress monitoring. So that's an additional element that we've added. So this was the timeline. We had our committee. And we did, at that point, we had representation from the county, and county commissioners were part of that process, but it was really a whole community effort. And I facilitated it. It was, I enjoyed doing that. It allowed me to be very hands-on, which I appreciate. We developed a plan and refined it, and our board approved it last April. And our vision statement is building a stronger community, one lifelong learner at a time. And our mission is Franklin County Schools will cultivate a dynamic learning environment focused on success beyond the classroom, preparing, inspiring, and illuminating the path so that all students will reach their full potential. And so we have some public-facing strategies and overview documents. That's, I put that in there twice. That's our blue, this is our blueprint. Of course, it's hard to benchmark data when you don't have a baseline. So we're, we're waiting on establishing the baseline so we can benchmark that out. But you'll see we have four goals. One is about college and career readiness. The next is academic proficiency, proficiency in core academic areas. The third is a safe, orderly, and caring environment. And then the last goal is about recruiting, supporting, and retaining high-quality professionals. And then for each of those goals, we have objectives and also strategies that we've identified to, to reach those objectives that are very specific. And then we also have a progress monitoring component where we, this is just an example of us coming, we're coming back together twice annually and refining and making adjustments. So that's a little bit about our COVID journey and a little bit about our strategic planning process. Some of our challenges that we're facing as a district right now, management of COVID-19, of course, and its impact on our students' instructional gaps, our social and emotional well-being, and other needs. Infrastructure for internet, you all are very well aware of that and have been working to address that. That's a larger issue in our community, and Franklin County is better off than many of our neighboring districts. It just still is an issue, and it's illuminated in the situation that we're in right now. We have worked to get those KJTs out, but that's really a patch and not an ideal long-term solution. Facilities, HVAC and roofing are two big concerns that are district-wide issues that are in need of addressing, that are costly, and not very exciting, honestly, that they are, they are definitely two areas that need, need attention. And then we're looking at, we, we have an RFQ process in place just to begin to take a look at the possibility of a new elementary school to replace Franklinton Elementary. Franklinton Elementary's campus is very spread out. The school was built, there are classrooms that open up to the outside. It's, it's a very open floor plan for an elementary school. There are about $6 million in needs for the, over the next five to 10 years. At least $6 million in needs there with electrical wiring and HVAC and some roofing issues. There are issues with erosion on campus. So those are, that's something that we're just taking a look at the feasibility of doing a feasibility study to take a look at that school specifically. Some of our successes, I think we've done a good job of managing COVID-19, all things being considered. We've gotten positive feedback from our stakeholders. We've managed to maintain a pretty high level of enrollment, especially comparatively. We provided device access for all students, pre-K 12. We've provided meals, weekday, weekend. We've really tried to maximize the opportunity for families to have access to food. We're the only district in the area that's maintained the face-to-face option through the fall, since fall, with the exception of that one week. We've developed a new strategic plan that we're implementing. We relocated the early college with your help to Vance Granville's campus, and it's going beautifully. They got a new sign today. I got a text from the principal who's very excited. It's a great location for that. We have with the, your assistance, been able to implement and maintain a classified salary table that has had a positive impact over the past two years for over 400, for 430 of our classified employees. And that has, that has been very beneficial in recruitment and retention. And we've completed the Lewisburg High School Stadium Athletic Complex with bond funds. And I did insert a couple of pictures. These, these obviously were not taken today because it is definitely gloomier out than that, but it's a beautiful facility. And we're really excited about that for Lewisburg High School. Our priorities, and I put a disclaimer on this. So we had a board work session to discuss priorities before this meeting. So I did put an asterisk that it would be discussed, but the feedback from the board was they were good with these priorities looking ahead to next year, addressing student learning gaps. Addressing student learning gaps created by COVID-19, sustaining our classified salary pay tables, continuing funding. We're doing a differential pay for difficult-to-fill EC teacher positions, a supplement there. Continue to expand our pre-K programming, addressing our facilities' needs, short-term and long-term. Providing equitable access to technology tools and Wi-Fi for students. And providing additional support staff to meet increased social and emotional demands of students. The majority of those areas, in fact, all of those areas, with the exception of facilities and classified pay tables, are, are, are things that we'll be able to address with those, those additional funds that we're receiving at the federal level that are earmarked for response to COVID. And that's it. I talked fast and a lot, so I'll answer any questions that you may have. But I will say, we, we do appreciate your support and, and you're definitely, you're appreciative every day. But you're especially appreciative when you're dealing with tough situations to be part of a community that, that is supportive of one another and supportive of public education. So we appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Members of the board, any questions for Dr. Schuler tonight?
I have one.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jones.
Joe, thank you for your report. We've got a lot of news about mental health. Could you comment on the mental health of our students in Franklin County in terms of how they are adjusting to all these new situations?
Yes, that's a great question, Mr. Jones. So we actually have developed an equity committee that's working to address some of the equity issues. And there's some, there are some mental health aspects to that with some training that we're doing with staff and support of students around resiliency and, and dealing with tough situations and adversity. We're doing, we have an attendance and engagement committee and they've been digging into students who have disengaged from school. Either aren't participating in class outright or are maybe checking the boxes, but not really engaged. Our counselors have been doing, as students have returned for face-to-face, they've done some online. They've been doing some assessments to get, to get a gauge on students' kind of emotional, social, emotional well-being and responding to that with support. We have our social workers, we've actually, that's one of the areas of focus for us is addressing the social and emotional needs, looking ahead. Right now, we have four social workers. We do have two contracted social workers that we're working with right now to provide additional support. And we're looking at expanding the social worker footprint next year with some additional support with those funds, those CARES Act funds. We, we recognize that our students have increased the needs. And our, our social workers have been working with our counselors and our principals and our teachers to help address those needs. So that's definitely an area of focus for us. And the work of the attendance and engagement committee is focused on that. And also the work of our equity committee, they're kind of working in conjunction with one another to address those concerns. But it's absolutely on the radar. It's not just the academic gaps that are concerning. It's those social, emotional needs of students and, and making sure that, that they're on track in all, in every way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions tonight for Dr. Schuler? Don't be shy. Now's your chance. She's ready and prepared. All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Schuler, tonight for this wonderful time to share a lot of good information. Look forward to your presentation that we can kind of peruse a little bit more and better understand what's going on and all the hard work. So thank you and convey our appreciation to all those that work with you on how much we appreciate how hard they work with you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. You all have a good evening.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye-bye. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we will move on to item number six tonight on our agenda, which is the S-3 Aviation LLC Hangar Lease and Construction Agreement. This is going to be shared with you tonight with our airport director, Mr. Beau Carson. And I believe Mr. Floyd is getting Beau on the line, ready for us. Beau, whenever you're ready, sir, we are ready to hear your presentation and thoughts tonight. Good evening.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear, I can hear you fine, sir.
All right. Perfect, perfect. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and I know this is a long meeting and I've heard from Mr. Levine. I've got my work cut, work cut out for me in regards to the number of people coming through the airport this week and we are ready for the challenge. I'm gonna go ahead and share my computer screen, so give me just a second here. All right. All right. First of all, Mr. Chair, Madam Manager, and Commissioners, it's a pleasure to bring this before you tonight in regards to potential activity at Triangle North Executive Airport. Tonight's request before you is the hangar lease and construction agreement for S-3 Aviation. In regards to this opportunity, I've got a map here of the area that it would go in the, on the airfield. It is actually, will be on the campus in our south hangar area beside Skyhawk Enterprises. And it will consist of 3,960 square feet. I am looking at doing a 40-year lease with your approval. That is similar to the other leases that traditionally we have at the airport per what is allowed under the FAA. The lease will start at 17 cent a square foot and then will be an escalation clause year after year annually in regards to the CPI inflation rate. The company is a local company out of Raleigh. They are called Strategic Security Solutions LLC. And their investment in regards to this hangar will be between $250,000 and $500,000 for the structure. That does not clude, include the site work that they are going to take on themselves to make sure that they fit in this particular space. The, the building tax value will be anywhere from $2,000 up to just shy above of $4,000 based on the amount of the investment that they put into the building. And the two guarantors on this particular facility for S-3 Aviation is Jay Slaughterbeck and Ron Eaton, Eaton, excuse me. Jay is actually on the call with us today if there's any questions at the conclusion of my presentation for your consideration. And I am happy to report that, that Jay does, or their company does have their current Cirrus at our, at our airport that I'll show you in a few minutes. In regards to the construction part of the agreement, they are looking at constructing a 66-foot by 60-foot hangar with an 18-foot hangar high door that will be built hurricane-grade, obviously, for, for wind resistance. The facade of the facility or the hangar will be similar to our airfield. And they will be hiring a North Carolina general contractor as required by our lease. And that is Elevate Building Company that is local, as well as the building type will be steel-based, based on Armstrong Steel Buildings. The aircraft that they will be bringing in, as you see here, this is their actual aircraft. It's not at our airport, but this is one that I was able to screen grab before their purchase. As you can see, their tail number 919, that's the area code, so it's always good to see that local commitment to their tail number. But you're looking at a 2020 Cirrus SR-22T. This aircraft ranges in value of $750,000 to $1 million. And as you know, that will go on our tax base for Franklin County. And they do have plans on going larger into, into, into a larger aircraft in the near future. The guarantee for the county in regards to this hangar and housing this particular aircraft and as they grow in the future would result in a tax value of just north of $6,000 to close to $8,050 based on how it's assessed by our tax office with Mr. Dan Williams. This does not count any fuel sales that the airport will also gain from having them locate here as well as our oil sales if they choose to need any aviation oil that we have for sale. Obviously, just as a note, as the, as the asterisk says at the bottom, it does not include any of the fire or other associated taxes that may come due as well to pay for those particular services. And then, so the benefit before you today is that by agreeing or approving this construction and hangar lease is that the airport will gain a new aviation tenant that would in turn increase our operations at the airport, which would in the future help with our future runway extensions when those numbers are counted again. It also will be a new, a new tenant, which I'm very happy to see would be growing at our airport that will fit our master layout plan that we are currently in the process of finalizing. As I mentioned earlier, there will be guarantors for the hangar. And then also they have plans to go larger in the future. So just doing a quick recap, you're looking at a tax base for the hangar of anywhere between $2,000 and $4,000 a year. You're doing a tax base of the aircraft, which would result of anywhere between $6,000 and $8,000 per year. The land lease will start at $673.20 based on their square footage at 17 cent a square foot. And as I mentioned earlier, would increase in the CPI on an annual basis. Then also there's the fuel and aviation oil sales that the airport and the county would receive as well from them being based at the airport. And then obviously, at the end of the lease, the hangar will revert to the airport slash county ownership per the rules of the FAA. So my request before you tonight is, is the approval of this hangar lease and construction agreement by S-3 Aviation LLC. I'm happy to take any questions. And I also have Jay Slaughterbeck, one of the guarantors on the phone call with us, as well as our engineer of record, Greg Vandermolen, if you have any engineering-type questions. So I'm happy, Mr. Chair, to, to receive any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Beau. Thank you. We appreciate that. So from our board tonight, any questions for Mr. Carson? No questions? Beau, you did an outstanding job tonight, sir. We greatly appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate that and I appreciate the, the opportunity for you to be considered for approval.
Absolutely. Thank you again.
I appreciate your consideration as well and Beau, all of your diligence on this.
Thank you, Jay. I appreciate it. And thank you for joining us tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion. We approve.
Second.
We have a motion tonight from Commissioner Bun, second by Commissioner Speed to approve the lease agreement and the construction agreement. Is any further discussion? No further discussion. We'll go to a roll call vote then. Please remember to turn your microphones on. Commissioner Bun.
Yes.
Commissioner Speed.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Floyd.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner London.
Yes.
Thank you. And Commissioner Pierce.
Yes.
And I vote yes. The yeses have it and it is so ordered. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for that opportunity tonight. And thank you to Mr. Carson for his fine efforts and what he's doing here at our airports.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Then we'll move on to item number seven tonight, which is Triangle North Executive Airport's Airfield Lighting Rehabilitation Grant, change order number one. And again, we have Mr. Beau Carson on deck, so please share this upcoming lighting.
Yes, sir. So as some of you may remember, back in 2018, this was a grant that Triangle North Executive Airport received from the Board of Transportation. It resulted in a grant of $1,521,000 to rehabilitate the lights and the signage at, at our airport, in our airfield. The lights at that time were, at that point in 2018, seven years past their due to be replaced. And we are now fortunate enough to have a grant to, to replace those lights with LEDs as well as our signs to make it more safe and attractive for future aviation customers. Also, at that point, in August 6, 2018, the then Franklin County Board of Commissioners approved this project with the local match of $169,000 to that overall larger grant that we were awarded back in, back in July. Just to give you an idea of some of the objectives of the grant and to re-familiarize those that were on the commissioner board at that point, as well as the new commissioners that we have today. We are replacing our runway and taxi weight lighting system. We're adding new LED signs and lights. And I tell you, they are bright, which is very nice to see. We are also receiving a PAPI-4 system versus a PAPI-2. And the PAPI-4 obviously goes into the horizontal landing of aircraft. So that will be across the board, a huge upgrade for future pilots coming into the airport. We're also upgrading our real lights, which is our runway in identifier lights. And then we're getting a brand-new electrical vault to go at the, the north end of our field that will basically house all the electronics of the, of this new system. And then the company will be removing the runway and taxi light, the old lights and signs per the contract. So the request before you is a, is approval of change order number one. Obviously, as this goes along, things do tend to change. And due to the timing of when this grant was awarded in 2018 to today, we're in 2021. We do have a small change request order of $9,518. And as you can see there, we're planning on installing approximately 32 feet, and I'm sorry, your faces are in the way of my text. But 32 feet of 15-inch double-wall HDPE pipe, 34 tons of aggregate fill, 60 tons of riprap by Reifenberg Construction Company. That is the, the company that won the bid. And just to make sure that all of you are aware, this change order will not reflect any new money required by the county slash airport for this particular change order as it, it will be incorporated through some savings that the company has done over this time period that will allow us to do this project within that initial $169,000 that was approved back in 2018. So my request tonight is, is approval, Mr. Chair, of this change order number one.
All right. Thank you, Beau. Questions from the board tonight?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Bun, a second from, from Commissioner Speed to approve. Any further discussion tonight? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Bun?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Speed?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
And Commissioner Pierce?
Yes.
All right. And I vote yes. The yeses have it and it's so ordered. Thank you for your help with this tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Again, thank you, Beau. It's great seeing you tonight.
Thank you so much.
All right. Moving on to item number eight, planning and inspection staffing. Tonight, we're here from our planning director, Scott Hammerbacher, regarding a few position requests he has. Mr. Hammerbacher? Mr. Hammerbacher, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir, I can.
Very good. All right. The floor is yours, sir.
Just looking for my controls to be able to.
Sometimes they're at the bottom. They, they mess me up too. They're supposed, sometimes they're in your picture and then sometimes they're down below, so.
All right. Well, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening regarding this request. Tonight, I'm before you to make a request regarding particularly inspection staffing. Let go ahead and share my screen here. See if I can find it here. And so specifically, I am here before you tonight to request an additional two positions, specifically based on our classification system. That would be code enforcement officer one positions. Specifically, I'm asking for two. Below, we have a chart here. And so what we've experienced over the last four years is we have had double digits in growth occurring each year. Between 2016, 2017, we experienced a 26% increase in just single-family dwelling permits. Looking at the same trend from '27 to '218, we had 18% increase. From '18 to '19, we had 31% increase, as you can see there, particularly along my mouse here. Last year, we've experienced a 15% increase. And this is just looking, just at single-family dwellings. It's kind of a barometer we utilize for our department, looking at overall, uh, development occurring within the county. Certainly, we account for non-residential, uh, multifamily, I mean, mobile homes, uh, commercial structures. And this doesn't even include, you know, just the change outs for someone's mechanical system or things such as that. So what we're trying to do here tonight is, uh, is we're looking at, uh, basically our, basically our capacity we have within our existing staffing, um, looking at the future, uh, and what's going to be needed to accommodate the growth going forward. Uh, a lot of the discussion we had this evening from, you know, uh, looking at housing to school capacity, new hangar, you know, you know, this is a reoccurring theme we have throughout the county, uh, revolving around growth. Um, I would like to note that in February of eight, 2018, uh, the board commissioners did grant one new, uh, position. Uh, in August of 2019, uh, they granted additional two positions. Ideally, obviously, we'd like to include this as part of our budget process, uh, but looking at just current development trends, um, and training, uh, going forward, uh, we felt most prudent to bring this before you so we could basically stay ahead of the building curve. So specifically, um, you have before you, uh, the, basically the full package of this, um, looking at just under $190,000, um, looking at salaries, uh, bringing someone in the starting range or midpoint, uh, from their insurance to retirement, uh, required training, uh, computers, um, and then also one of the bigger ticket items is just being able to provide new vehicles, uh, for these two new positions. So going forward on that, uh, just as a reminder to the board right now, uh, per state law, uh, we are required to, to make our effort to conduct inspections within a two-day timeframe. So that means, you know, if you called in inspection today, um, on Monday, we need to be out there by Wednesday. Um, also, if you've submitted plans, whether it be for a deck, a new home, a new, uh, airport hangar, uh, we need to be able to ride, turn those comments back to your, have those plans reviewed within 15 days. Um, just as a reminder, right now, uh, we do have, we have seven field inspectors, uh, we have one plan reviewer and a supervisor overseeing those operations. Uh, so should this, uh, request be granted this evening, uh, this will be looking to supplement our field inspectors and then also, uh, giving the one person doing plan review additional resources. Um, this is a note as well, our code enforcement officers, uh, per state law on this from DOI, uh, they are required to get certification, uh, which does require substantial investment on the county for them to get certified in all four trades, um, those being building, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing. And then also just to reiterate, uh, we are, the quote we've provided was based on providing new work trucks similar to our existing fleet. So we did get an updated quote on that, uh, for those. Uh, so at this time, I'd be happy to entertain any questions the board may have, uh, regarding this request. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Hammerbacher. Go ahead, Mr. Floyd.
Yeah. You'd say the, uh, permit fees that you take in will pay for these positions and the, uh, equipment, the, the trucks and everything?
Yes, sir. Uh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I can't believe I forgot to include that, but yes, this would have no impact on the general fund. Uh, the fees we collect from permits today are adequate to, uh, provide for the, uh, this request this evening.
And I'm sure if things ever do turn around or things decrease, you would, uh, I guess do a RIF action?
That would certainly be a possibility. Yes, sir. Um, thank you.
Any other questions from the board tonight? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board? I have a motion from Commissioner Pierce and a second from, I'm not sure who the voice was.
Right here.
Mr. Speed. All right. Motion by Commissioner Pierce, second by Mr. Speed. Any further discussion tonight? All right. Roll call vote. Commissioner Bun?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Speed?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Pierce?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The yeses have it and it is so ordered. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to number, item number nine tonight is an intergovernmental agreement, Franklin County and the town of Youngsville for Main Street improvements and utility upgrades. Uh, our county manager, Ms. Denton, will be, um, sharing this information with us tonight and also our public utilities director, Mr. Chris Doherty.
Thank you, Chairman Schreiber and commissioners. I appreciate your time tonight. Uh, the intergovernmental agreement, uh, with the town of Youngsville relates to the Main Street improvement project that Youngsville, um, has an opportunity to, to, uh, to, uh, do lots of things in their town, uh, along the Main Street area. The board was initially notified of this project back in May of 2020, and the initial amount that was approved by the board was $866,890. And of course, the intergovernmental agreement, uh, the purpose of that is for Franklin County to reimburse the town of Youngsville for the utilities upgrades while the Main Street Improvement Project is underway, taking advantage of the dig wants policy while the street is open, while activity is there and the pipe is exposed, um, infrastructure is exposed, uh, then there's the opportunity to upgrade the, uh, infrastructure. And of course, the town of Youngsville will bid the project, uh, they'll contract with the most responsive bidder and, um, the, the work that will be done is replacing the county's water and sewer lines as well as relocating the fire hydrants. And of course, all of this is happening in conjunction with stormwater, sidewalk, landscaping, road improvements, uh, they are on the Main Street area in the town of Youngsville. And of course, throughout the process, um, the planning and construction process, public utility staff will be inspecting the utilities work included in all the, uh, project progress meetings are very much a part and a partner in this process. This is a large project though, and a number of parties are involved. And since their initial approval, uh, since the initial presentation back in May, the North Carolina DAP has reviewed the plans and they've provided some comments. And of course, their comments also included some recommended, uh, plan changes, which also included some additional cost. And so at this time, I'm going to ask, uh, Chris Doherty if he will share the screen with a little chart that depicts the increase in cost, but basically 866,890 was the original cost and now, uh, $1,099, excuse me, $809. And if you look at this chart, um, there's about four different, four or five different categories, uh, some, uh, mobilization, traffic control surveying, uh, there, we didn't have any originally, some was added, uh, pavement repair increased a little bit, sewer construction, um, actually increased a little bit, water construction decreased. But the biggest contributor to this request is a contingency of 20%. So again, uh, the request before you tonight is, um, to consider, uh, the approval of this intergovernmental agreement and the new cost associated with it, authorize the county manager to sign the agreement and approve the, uh, the increase. I, I would like to point out, and of course, Chris is here to answer any, any other detailed questions, but I want to point out that this opportunity to upgrade the county's water and sewer infrastructure in this very rapidly growing area of the county is ultimately a savings opportunity for the public utilities department. Because the town of Youngsville will, will be doing this project anyway, renovating their streets and sidewalks, then this infrastructure will be exposed. And so this is the time to take advantage of this, um, to do these upgrades because reopening the streets at a later time and having to repave and redo things, um, may not be as cost effective. And certainly, if we're going to do all that pretty work up top, we want to make sure that the integrity of the system is, uh, is going to be strong. So again, if, uh, if, uh, you have any particular questions, um, be glad to answer those.
Thank you, Ms. Denton. Uh, any questions from the board tonight on this?
Again, I have one question.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jones?
The contingency plan is in effect if needed, right?
Uh, I think that is the technical definition of contingency. Chris, you may want to weigh in on that, but I, I think it means just in case, basically.
Yes, that is correct, Commissioner Jones. Just in case we need it, if there's unforeseen, uh, changes, once we start digging, that's what that money would be there for.
So it may not cost that much?
It, it may not cost that much. And this is, um, a preliminary cost estimate from the engineers. Um, it's still, the, the project still has to go out to bid.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board tonight? I think, uh, I'd like to offer or add a, a small comment here, and that is that, um, I would like for us to, to maybe set a ground rule expectation. This may, this, this is the extent of, of this project and our participation, um, in hopes that that will create a ceiling, um, with the cost. Um, I do know and understand that there are several cost measures in construction right now that are growing and they're outpacing, um, a lot of things that are going on. And it may be that by the time this, this, um, rise in cost and, and the fluctuation of things settles, um, that it could possibly be that, that some of these costs could come down a little bit. But, um, just the fact that we started out $866,000 and now we're looking at over a 25% increase, um, in a commitment that at the time the board agreed to move into this was, was much less at eight, eight 66. Um, I think it's important that we, uh, send a message that we need to be more conscious of, of understanding commitments before we get involved in them and that before we make that ultimate commitment. Um, and so, uh, I would like for us to be able to be sure that we're, um, very observant of the continuous contingency, uh, line item. Um, I know that our public utilities department will be, um, present in monitoring the activity as, as the changes are made and the systems implemented by the contractor. Um, and so I just want to be sure that we're, um, that we're watching this and that we are, as we move forward and other items that we're, we're, um, we're not committing to numbers that then increase at margins like this. 25% is a huge increase, uh, in a short, short period of time. And I don't think it's anybody here's fault, but I think it's something that we need to be more aware of moving forward and conducting the business of the county and the way we spend the money of the taxpayers and the consumers, because this is consumer money and enterprise situation, but nonetheless, it's important that we protect that as well. So that was my comment for this, uh, opportunity. Are there any final comments before I ask for consideration?
May I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Pierce, please go ahead.
Owning a small business that does grading and trenching, I understand the philosophy of contingency because of the fact that you never know what you're going to find when you start digging. End of comment.
Thank you for that. Any further comments? All right. Hearing no comments tonight, the action request is consider the approval of the agreement and the increased funding. What is the pleasure of the board tonight?
Move for approval.
Second.
Move by approval, uh, Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Speed. Any further discussion tonight? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Vice Chairman Bun?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Speed?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
And Commissioner Pierce?
Yes.
I vote yes. The yeses have it and it is so ordered. Thank you, Ms. Denton and Mr. Doherty for your time and efforts, and, uh, we look forward to what this is going to do and a perfect time for us to take advantage of kind of refreshing and making things, uh, well and improved underneath of what's going to be new and beautiful above, so that we don't have to go in there and make a mess of other things when that's nice. So, very good. Thank you again for that time. All right. Moving along to item number 10 tonight, our appointments. Uh, letter A is the Lewisburg Board of Adjustments ETJ. The board is asked to reappoint Brian Cash and to appoint Tracy Wright to the Lewisburg Board of Adjustments ETJ. Was a pleasure.
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Speed, I believe, a second by Commissioner London?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote. Commissioner, uh, Bun?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
And Commissioner Pierce?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. The yeses have it and it is so ordered. Item number two tonight is the Lewisburg Planning Board ETJ. The board is asked to reappoint Ms. Fannie Perry and to appoint Ms. Bobby Jo May to the Plan, the Lewisburg Planning Board ETJ. What is the pleasure of the board?
So move.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Bun, second by Commissioner London. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Commissioner Bun?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Speed?
Yes.
The London?
Yes.
Commissioner Pierce?
Yes.
And Commissioner Schreiber votes yes as well. The yeses have it and it is so ordered. Thank you for that, ladies and gentlemen. Item number 11 tonight is other business. Is there any other business to the board tonight? Hearing none, I have two quick items for you. I would ask for your consideration tonight on our schedule, uh, for commissioner meetings in the month of July. It appears that we have a scheduled meeting on the 5th of July, um, and I would like to ask that we move that to the 12th. My reason behind that is many people travel on vacations, uh, during that time and access to us by the public will probably be greatly diminished, uh, during those times. And I think it's wise of us to catch that early here in the beginning of February, now the middle of February, uh, February, and make that adjustment so people can plan accordingly if they want to, um, approach us regarding...
You accept.
Uh, so I'm sorry, repeat that?
Motion to accept the change.
All right. There's a motion?
Very good.
And by Commissioner Bun? Any further discussion? Hearing none? I don't know that, uh, Mr. Attorney, do we need a vote for procedural calendar?
Um, it's probably good to do it.
We're do it. Fair enough. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, Commissioner Bun?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir.
All right. Commissioner Speed?
Yes.
London?
Yes.
And Commissioner Pierce?
Yes.
I vote yes. The yeses have it and it is so ordered. Thank you for that. Uh, one final, uh, housekeeping for me is, um, committee appointments for the new commissioners, Commissioner London and Commissioner, uh, Pierce, as well as, uh, myself and who was Commissioner Speed? Uh, being reelected or newly elected, there are appointments to our various boards that you all are going to be responsible for filling. I have that list and I will be reaching out to you later on this week to, um, set a time that I can meet with you, share this information with you and guide you in, um, moving forward. The goal would be that we would want to put these in place, hopefully by the 15th of March, although it is not a mandate or precedent, uh, we want to be sure that we give you all the time that you need to, um, secure the right person that you feel confident in being on that board and serving our county. This is a four-year commitment, so I want to take our time to be sure that you all have the time necessary to make a decision on something that is four years versus a year. So that's the only housekeeping that I have, uh, tonight. Uh, are there, is there any other business tonight? All right. We will move on then to item number 12, which is our board manager and clerk's comments. This is a time that's set aside by our board to hear comments from our county commissioners, our county manager and our clerk to our board. I'm going to ask, uh, for our clerk first. Ms. King, do you have anything?
No comments this evening. Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Denton?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Schreiber. Actually have two things this evening. Uh, first, I want to say welcome to our new assistant county manager. Uh, Will Durfer is on the call tonight. Um, he's been, uh, quiet and patient throughout the evening and, um, he also, uh, came back this evening for the meeting, so I was delighted at that. This was his first day and, um, and have introduced him to a lot of things going on in Franklin County already. And so, uh, again, we welcome him. He comes to us from the town of Liberty, so he has experience as a town manager. He has also worked in county government. He is an Army 82nd Airborne veteran and also holds a Masters of Public Administration degree from Appalachian State University. So I'm delighted to have him here on our team and, uh, Will, if you have any words you'd So I'm delighted to have him here on our team, and uh, Will, if you have any words you'd like to share, uh, feel free to.
Can everybody hear me? Okay, I think I turned my sounds a little bit. Okay. Um, so just uh, I want to thank Kim very much for the opportunity to serve Franklin County. Um, I look forward to uh working closely with her as a member of the team to implement the wishes in direction um guidance of the board. And I'm just really happy to be here, so thank you all very much, and I look forward to working with you.
All right, thank you, Will. Uh, the second item I have is our update from Open Broadband. Uh, remember uh two meetings back, we heard an update from Open Broadband, and. They're supplying us with information, and um as needed, we'll invite them to come and give a a more detailed update. Uh, but basically, the server configuration is complete, and the activation of the LTE service is going to be online the week of September, uh, excuse me, February fifteenth. So that's this week, the LTE configuration will be available. They're going to be doing some initial testing and then signing up customers. They are continuing to um solicit uh homes in the area. They uh sent out their monthly newsletter for the month of February. If you're on the waitlist for Open Broadband, you will receive that um that monthly newsletter. Uh, from the White Level Tower, they have twenty five residential customers, uh, three commercial customers. And from the A-Lot Tower, they have six residential customers, and they haven't signed up any commercial customers, but I'm sure they're working on that, so. Um, and later this week, we'll be having an implementation meeting with Open Broadband. Uh, again, working on the next phases and steps as they um roll out their service, so thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Denton, thank you for that information tonight. Um, Commissioners, I'll start out with uh Vice Chairman Bun. Any comments tonight, sir?
I have no comments, sir.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Foy?
Uh, no comment.
Very good. Commissioner Jones?
No comment.
Commissioner Speed?
No comment.
Commissioner London?
Uh, yes, I would just like to um thank our Health Director, uh, Mr. Levine, as well as uh Dr. Shuler for uh their leadership. Um, and their hard work during these challenging times of the pandemic, and I would just also like to say that uh to Mr. Dorfer. Um, that I look forward to your leadership, and thank you for serving, sir.
Very good. Thank you for that. Commissioner Pierce? Commissioner Pierce, can you hear me? Got unmute, sir.
Excuse me, I was trying to get unmuted.
It's all right.
I do have a couple of comments. Uh, I appreciate uh Will Dorfer, I think I'm pronouncing it correct. Coming on board, and I I appreciate the efforts and all from the uh school superintendent. And our uh county health director. I agree with uh Kelly in that regard. I agree one hundred percent. They are putting forth a large effort. I would also like to comment that we need to push forward immediately on the Animal Advisory Board. I think that is necessary. There's been enough information provided by both the person tonight that was on our meeting. As well as email information, and I think that that is a necessary thing that this county needs to move forward to do. Now I'll hush.
Thank you for your comments tonight, Commissioner Pierce. All right, um, check your inbox. I sent another email out requesting a little bit more information on your animal control requests, so um I believe I did that late last week, but nonetheless. All right, then, um, I believe that leaves myself as the last one. If I missed anybody, and I've said enough tonight, so thank you for that. Is anyone I'm missing for comments tonight? I think we're in good shape. All right, ladies and gentlemen, item number thirteen uh has been removed from our agenda. Uh, we will not need a closed session at this time, and so everybody is smiling at everyone, so even even our county attorney is smiling. There you go. All right, well, look, um, I think that concludes our our board meeting or our agenda at least. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Have a safe night and a safe week, and uh we will be back here soon. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.